One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is Monday, December 11th, 2017. Can we take a roll call?
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Crowst?
Missourik?
Here.
Capros?
Here.
Waylon?
Here.
We need approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Any changes? So.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Missourik?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Village Clerk, report.
Uh, the tax income received since our last board meeting, since we won't be holding a meeting later this month, is ninety-seven thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents. State law now also requires the village to annually approve the regular board meeting and ZBA meeting dates for the coming year, um, ahead of the year, and then I have to post them and send them to press. Excuse me. Um, attached is a list of the scheduled meetings that will be canceled, some will be canceled because of holidays as we approach them, but this is the formal list to be sent out, and a motion is required to approve them.
So.
Second.
Roll call?
Waylon?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Missourik?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
That's all.
Okay, any recognition of the audience? I don't think we have anybody here tonight, so we'd like to open it up. Uh, reports from the village commissions. Uh, beautification commission?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, Fourth of July commission?
I have nothing to report.
All right, youth commission?
Um, youth commission came out to the Christmas bazaar to do letters to Santa. The kids that were there, it was successful, they had a good time. And the next event is going to be in January, Martin Luther King Day. It will be a bowling day, and more information to come, that's all I have.
Okay, ribbon of hope?
Um, all the plaques are on the benches, all the bricks are engraved, uh, everything's done there. And we're just waiting for a sprint, dedicated. That's all I have.
Historic preservation commission, uh, our meeting is canceled for this month, and we're going to pick it up, pick it up again, uh, in January. So there's nothing to report. Finance and administration, Frank?
All right, uh, Bob?
Yeah, Donna couldn't make it tonight, so I'll give her a report. Um, the treasurer's report's included in your packet for review. Uh, we dropped about two-hundred thousand in combined, uh, corporate accounts, um, for the prior month. Everything's trending exactly the way we anticipated it to trend. Fourth of July has about ten grand warranted this year, this time to last year at this time. Uh, other than that, everything is running above where we would expect it to be. Uh, the next page of the report is your, your cash flow chart. And then the following page is a list of all the transactions that the treasurer made in the prior month that did run through accounts payable. I do not believe there's anything in there, uh, that was, there's some commission bills from the youth commission. Uh, there was one newsletter check that was cut from the file newsletter. And of course, the purchase of the truck, which you've already pre-approved. Other than that, that's all the activity for the treasurer.
All right, um, I'd consider a motion approving the treasurer's report and the report of financial activity in the prior month.
Is that a motion?
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Roll call?
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Missourik?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
All right, the various reports for the preceding month are enclosed for your review. Uh, and the approval of the bills for the prior month. We have some highlighted ones in here. Weckers, uh, consolation, Green Bay's hardware, critical reach. JCM uniforms. Lexi pole. So I'd like to make a motion approving, uh, bills for two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Motion and seconded, um, roll call?
I got a couple of questions. Um, the, uh, batteries, those are for, it says for Humvees.
I'm guessing that's what they were for, you want?
Yeah, the replacement on, uh, one of the Humvees.
Okay, okay. So it was one then?
Pardon me?
It was one?
Yes, sir.
It's listed as four.
Yes.
And then, um, there, there was another one for Elmer and Sons rekeying, the, uh, which I guess would be you too. Didn't we just get it rekeyed? Was this something else, or?
We, we added two dead bolts that had to be rekeyed to a master.
Oh, okay, okay. So this is something different?
Well, it's, it's, it's adding two more locks that weren't there previously.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the, the last, the true last rekey was probably ten years ago, twelve years ago. We just added two more dead bolts.
Okay.
We did have a massive, I think these boys are referring to is we had a big element sun go a month ago. And I thought we rekeyed the station after you.
Well, some of those, the, the Elmer Sun you're probably looking at right now was, uh,
It's like seventy bucks.
You have some squad car keys. Uh, it was, uh, a couple, uh, master keys, but it was mainly squad car keys and some, uh,
Okay, so last month was?
So last month was?
Last, last month was the, uh, dead bolts, putting two dead bolts on. This is, uh, squad cars, so we've, uh, trying to, accountability, all officers have been assigned to certain squads to make sure they have keys in their pockets, they don't get locked out, they get extra keys.
Yeah, that's just the descriptions off, so that'd be his fault.
Yeah, so the previous?
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's pretty generic, it's always left the same, I, I ask, you know, for?
Yeah, then that would be the dead bolts for the previous month, these are, uh, actual, actual individual keys.
Gotcha, thanks for the time. All right.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Waylon?
Yes.
Capros?
Yes.
Missourik?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil? Um, the village will need to extend a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar interest loan to the sewer plant engineering. This loan is due on February first. It is obvious, obvious at this point that the E, I E P A loan will not come through in time, uh, to pay this balloon loan off. Uh, the bank has agreed to extend this loan at a designated rate above prime for one additional year with no penalty early repayment. Uh, we will be adopting an appropriate ordinance to extend this loan obligations at our January meeting. Any questions? That ends my report.
Okay, thank you. Public Buildings and Properties, Parks and Recreation, um, Todd Lott, I met with the vendor. Uh, he had given me some, uh, proposals, and we talked, we're narrowing it down a little bit. We're going to get into more of a, uh, section, uh, phase-type playground proposal, so we're working on that. I should have that within the next week or two. Ice rink update, Buddy, you said you framed?
Well, it started, yeah, it's already framed out, there's cones over there. Uh, we will be installing that at the start of next week. In other words, it should be up and filling by Monday or Tuesday.
Now, when the ice rink is up and running, we turn the lights on at four o'clock, we don't?
When we leave and that police turns them off, yes.
At ten o'clock at night?
Yes.
And is there a sign there we still put there?
Yes, on the sign, there's a sign that's been there for every year. I think it's ten, well.
I think it's around ten.
Ten or ten-thirty, isn't it?
It's ten.
Except on weekends?
It's where it sucks, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, that ends my report. Uh, planning, building, and zoning, uh, Trustee Missourik?
The building department monthly report is enclosed for your review, and the PZC is to meet on Thursday, December twenty-first, regarding Dunkin' Donuts drive-through, and a discussion on proposed zoning ordinance amendments to the trailer parking ordinance are on the agenda for that meeting.
Okay, public safety, uh, committee? Police department monthly report is in your packet for your review. EMA monthly reports are enclosed in the packet. Code enforcement monthly reports are also enclosed. And, uh, we had a coffee with a cop and shop with a cop, updates, Lieutenant?
We're doing a monthly coffee with a cop, uh, at Beecher Manor, and we'll be back on, I think, the twentieth, Christmas party. I understand Santa's going to come with us and go up there and see him. We're going to do that monthly. We've got a coffee with a cop planned for February at McDonald's. Uh, we do that about twice a year, and the shop with the cop, uh, we've had some generous donations come in, and we anticipate taking between twenty, twenty-five kids on Saturday, the sixteenth, uh, to Target in St. John. We'll shop with them, bring them back, they're going to be fed at McDonald's when we get back, and released back to their mom and dad.
Very good.
Are these kids from the Beecher School District?
This is the Beecher School District. Uh, the names came from the, uh, school district themselves, and, uh, anticipating about a hundred dollars per child to spend. And, uh, if any of you are free, we're still looking for some volunteers who'd like to do a one-on-one with the kids, so if anyone is free, would like to take part, uh, we will need meeting at the fire department parking lot on the sixteenth at eight AM. We're going to take, uh, school buses over to St. John, and like I said, take care of our business there, bring them back. And, uh, McDonald's has been kind enough to donate lunch when we get back, and, uh, after that, we'll get them back to the fire station and back to mom and dad.
Sounds good, I could reach out to Dennis and tell him that I'd like to be a part of that.
Yeah, anybody like to volunteer? Uh, Fire Department is, uh, uh, they partnered with us on this, they'll be there. We got some volunteers from UMA, we got seven or eight officers. Uh, so like I said, anybody that's free, uh, we're happy to have you come along and one-on-one with the kids, take them around, make sure they shop. Uh, Target also stepped up, uh, Target is themselves, they're putting five hundred dollars into the program for us. So, worked out, worked out really well for our first year. Worked out really well.
Very good.
How many kids?
Between twenty and twenty-five, we're still working on that, we're waiting on some callbacks from some parents. Uh, we've only had one parent say they, uh, they declined to participate. So, uh, like I said, we started with a list of, I think, ten or fifteen, and then as we've got more funding, we added, we got some standbys. And then we reached out to some families, we found out we had more kids that weren't on the list because we concentrated on the grade school and the elementary school, the junior high. We found out we had some of the upper grades, so once we got funding, we knew we had funding secured, we went ahead and brought them in, so to take care of them. So again, we're waiting on some final numbers, but, uh, it could be as high as thirty, but we're anticipating between twenty and twenty-five for sure.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you guys, I mean, people in here made it possible, so thank you.
Okay, public works committee, Trustee Capros.
Okay. Water department monthly reports are enclosed for your review, along with sewer department monthly reports. Uh, feature wastewater treatment plant update, um, I believe everyone got the emails on that. Um, we got some environmental groups, uh, expressing concerns regarding our plants. Uh, the operating permit for the new plant, um, they believe that the effluent, uh, limits are not sufficient to support the ecology of Trim Creek, where they can't keep river. Um, they're seeking more limits for ammonia and phosphorus discharges. Um, that's everything once, everything's treated and comes out. Um, although our new plant, the, these levels are going to be significantly lower than what's going in now that we're permitted to do. So, it's kind of, it, it's just kind of bizarre, but, um, our, um, engineering firm is working with it. Bob, you have any updates on that?
Um, we are confident we can get this issue resolved. Um, we have asked IHC for a sixty-day extension, so that would take us out to, uh,
May from the original one-twenty?
Yeah. And, and we're just waiting to hear, we've responded to their requests with what we, with what we said we would agree to do and what we have. It's kind of like a collective bargaining, we'll go back and forth, negotiating terms of the permit. Uh, but we've responded to their concerns, we're waiting for their response back.
And then that kind of ties in with Trustee Basil was talking about with the extension of the three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's for the engineering design fees, which were six-hundred thousand. It was the three-hundred-and-fifty part of it that we borrowed, um, so that's why we're extending the loan. Uh, Chestnut Street lighting project, Buddy, I know the lights have been received.
Lights are received, uh, they were, um, uh, power lines were augered in today, tomorrow the lights will be installed. Um, then I have to get with ComEd, they're going to come over, and then they have to do the final installation at the box. So cross your fingers, they should be lit by Friday. Or sooner. I, well, it depends, it, it depends on ComEd, I got to call my, my buddy over there, but.
Well, either way, we'll be ready for ComEd.
That's all we're going to be waiting for after tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, brush and leaf collection update?
Wednesday, we will be making our, um, la, we're going to be putting the machines away on Wednesday. We're keeping it out because it's going to be forty-something degrees out this weekend, so it's the last chance for everybody to get whatever they got to, to the curb. I mean, of course, unless there's storm damage, and then we will go out.
So this Wednesday or next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Uh, valve turning program?
The valve turning program is complete, uh,
Simpson did it?
Simpson, done, over with, and the new water line we put in, um, it's all been GPS, they took out the old ones, we will, you'll get a new map, and then it, it actually worked out pretty well, they did, we, we concentrated on the south end of town, it was that, uh, area to be done this year. Um, worked out rather well.
Uh, snow removal update, the village has nine hundred tons of salt on hand, um, we got the new truck up and running. Uh, you bought the new spreader?
Yeah.
Everything's equipped, ready to go?
There's a, there's a,
You came out and consulted, was it other morning?
Saturday.
Saturday morning.
Yeah. Um, there's electric plug, it has to, they, they had an issue with, but other, on the, that new piece, but other?
On the spreader?
Yeah, it's all mounted and ready to roll.
Um, results of Monday, twelve-four committee meeting, capital projects, five-year financial plan for the water and sewer utility. Um, water loss, uh, concerns, they were all discussed. Um, there was also, uh, discussion on the need to increase the sewer rate to the fund, uh, the increased operating cost of the new sewer plant for twenty-nineteen. Um, anyone have any questions? I mean, these are all things I think that are going to come up in the, we got five, when do we do the five-year financial balance?
Uh, that should be coming out in January.
January, so, I mean, we'll all see it there. Um, I mean, I had some concerns and that, so, I mean, we'll see what the board fancies on a lot of it, but, I mean, not much to update on without any figures in there or anything like that. We did come up with a game plan as far as, um, the next areas of water main to be replaced. And addressing some old, uh, lead service lines. And that could all change too with what the board fancies, we're going to, um, possibly discuss, uh, dollar increase per thousand. Again, it, it's, it's senseless right now to kind of explain it without the five-year financial plan in there, but, um, we discussed what our end game is, and, and that's to replace all the old ductile mains in town and get the town into plastic. So it's just a matter of what this board thinks we need to do, is a twenty-five, thirty-year plan from now okay for completion, or do we need to ramp it up? And as I brought up there, and we'll discuss it more, um, once we get numbers in front of us, is, I like the idea of, it being based on usage and not a flat fee where everybody pays the same for water main replacements, those using more water are going to pay more. Um, those using the minimal, the increase will be minimal. Um, and the other thing is, is that a hundred percent of this money that is collected, if we increase, will be used only for water main replacement. It cannot be used to fund day-to-day operations of the water system. It would be strictly for water main replacement. And by doing that, when, if you do, um, go with a, uh, let's call it a more aggressive plan on replacing all this old ductile, the beauty of it is the way that, um, we discussed setting it up, is that something that could come right off the bill once you accomplish your goal. Because as I said, it's, it's not being used for day-to-day operations of the water system. It would be strictly used to replace water mains. Once you get to that goal, rather than taking thirty years, maybe it's something that you can accomplish over the next twelve to fifteen and have this entire town on plastic, that's something that you can then take away and take off the bills. So it's, these are some of the things that we discussed, it was a lot of forward-thinking at the meeting, and, um, as we get into five-year financial plans and next year's budget, we'll see what everyone's thoughts are.
Do we know what the lifespan of the plastic is?
No one does.
No one?
No, no one does, but, um, I, I mean, realistically with the way it is, I mean, it's not metal, it's not going to,
Corrode.
It's not going to corrode, and, um, I mean, really, the only problems we've ever had is if somebody hit it auger.
Yep.
So, um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's where it is. I mean, as far as what's available out there right now on the market, I mean, that's the way to go, it's the best of the best. Will that change fifty or eighty years from now, possibly?
What do we do with plastic if somebody's digging and just like blasts into it with something?
You'll, you'll,
Fix it?
Huh? Can you fix it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you, you would do it the same as, you know, you'd have to do, do it with flanks and cut out that section and, and repair it and then replace it. Yeah, just like you do the, I mean, that's just what they do right now with the old ductiles, it'll be cut, cut from where the, where the hole is, or the leak is, or a crack, and then you,
Put a new piece in it?
Yep, yep.
Repair a PVC pipe.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the gas company went from black pipe to what I call garden hose kind of pipe for their gas main. And our water main is probably still more rigid than that.
Yeah.
You know, the plastic pipe we're using. But the risk is, people could hit it with a piece of equipment, but then you just go and fix it like you would if ducky brakes.
So, and like I said, I mean, once we get into numbers and stuff, I mean, that's about it. I mean, anyone have any questions about, or concerns about the meeting, or anything that we?
The, the plan will propose to drop another dollar, the plan will show if we keep rates the same, what we can accomplish. And then John's going to say, well, if you raise rates a dollar, this is how, for when we'll celebrate.
There was, there was a couple of options, and I'll, I'll work on the numbers more, but my thought was if you didn't, um, another dollar in the next year, then maybe three or four years from now, an additional dollar. I mean, realistically, you could be looking at having this, the entire town on plastic in twelve years. Um, right now, when we kind of forecasted it out, looking at the number of just rough estimates at dollars today, on what it's costing us kind of per foot and distances and stuff like that, it's realistically probably a thirty-year plus to get this town switched over. So, and these are all things that, I mean, you know, you had Pioton sell their water system for six million dollars. Um, I would, in my own opinion, I would never even entertain that idea because of the fact that it's gone. That water system is gone, gone forever. Is Aqua going to come in and replace their mains? Yeah. But guess what, if we add, Aqua's going to come in and raise their rates, there's nothing they can say about it or do about it. If we get aggressive and do it on our own, we control our rates, we can reduce them back down, take away that dollar or two that you added throughout the next couple of years. Um, you sell a water system, something like that, you've got no control over it, it's gone, and it's gone forever. So, just some things to think about.
And then the residents are just stuck with whatever rate Aqua wants to charge them whenever and raise it whenever, however, whatever they feel like doing.
So, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Economic Development and Community Relations Committee, Trustee Meyer.
Facebook page update, it's rolling along, I think as of last night, we got our five-hundred like for the page. But it's been going along quietly and smoothly, there's,
Can we take it off the agenda then, we're probably going to take it off?
Yeah, there's just, you know, there's postings going up, um, we've been sharing the more pertinent ones to the neighbor pages, and then when people have questions, they tend to kind of respond on those pages instead of ours, so, you know, anything that is really of information. You know, um, I, I shared the post regarding the process of hiring a police chief, and the only question underneath it was, yeah, but when's Dunkin' Donuts coming? So, but otherwise, you know, everything's quiet. Discussion on the future of the smartphone app, and I don't know, we don't have a, a full board here tonight, but just out of curiosity, you know, committee will be meeting. We're paying twenty-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year, which is a bargain at the moment, they charge new, when a municipality sign on, it's closer to four, five, six grand for the same app. They've kept us, since we're kind of their, their flagship, they've kept us at the same price, they've kept us pretty low. Um, with Facebook now and Nixle, kind of trying to get an idea of what you guys think, if, you know, if you still like the idea of the app or find it to be redundant. I know a lot of people that use it, that love it, but to be honest, they're using it as a phone book, and, uh, they find that to be extremely useful, the business directory portion of it. You know, or even the phone numbers to get to village hall, but, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think the search bar in Google works the same as the search bar in the end.
Well, what we came, what we came up with in the beginning, exactly, was that the search bar in Google will also, if you Google, you know, Mexican restaurants, it's also going to take you to Lolo or St. John or something, where if you look in the smartphone app, it keeps you in Beecher. So that was the initial thought, um, you know, if you're looking for a business in town, however. I get what you're saying.
If, if we decided to remove ourselves from that program, I think we should probably give the chamber the opportunity to pick it up before we did it, because we went out there to them as something we're doing for the business community, and if we want to get out of it, I'd offer it to them and say, hey, the chamber want to continue it, but if they don't, then, yeah, we got it off the ground, we got the program rolling.
Yeah, yeah, because the businesses loved it, they gave them a chance to have their names out there in the community for economic development, they, you know, they absolutely loved it. Uh, but for us to send information out, unfortunately, um, well, I've got iPhone X, I can't even get into the app because,
I was just going to ask, is this the app that people are having issues with constantly?
They've been having some issues with optimization for different platforms, it works, and then it kind of blows up and doesn't work. The notifications have not been working, so Nixle does a better job with the notifications. That's been the issue we've been having. On our end, we have to do the updates, which is our job to update the business directory, but that has a tendency to fall on me or Donna to try to do the updates, mostly me, to kind of come up with it twice a year to do updates to the businesses. Um, it's not an easy thing to keep up to date.
I was just going to, that's exactly what I was going to say, if the chamber wants to pick it up, I'd say that's fine, but I think we've, uh, with staff having to do with our policy, um, and staff taking care of the Facebook page now, um, in between the Nixle and everything else, I, I'm sure staff would not mind it either, um, taking that off of their plate.
Yeah, it's a little, it, it was more cutting-edge when it first came out, but, um, not so much anymore.
So it was an iPhone five, what are you on now?
It was, I know.
Might be on the X.
All right, Scott, do you kind of have any thoughts on that?
I feel the same way.
Stacy?
I feel we should reach out to Chamber and see what they think.
Okay, that gives us some direction. Um, I have something that's actually not here, but it's also a new business, so I don't know if you want me to bring it up now or wait for the new business section, but.
You have something for the village president?
The only thing is, you want to introduce strategic planning after the January eight. I think you, uh, I don't think we'll be ready to do chiefs yet, but the chiefs thing is coming too, and I'd like to get the strategic plan done.
All right, I think.
Because I'm going to go right from, yeah, to chief, right from chief to budget.
Right.
There's no other day before then that we can just get this done? I mean, my God.
Yeah, we still got a long way to go.
I know we got the holidays coming up, but.
I think at the January 8th, that's our short meeting, I think we should be able to knock down.
And just be willing, you know, if it takes us past nine, it takes us past nine, it takes us to.
Past nine o'clock, it's the key, keeping them here past nine o'clock.
Well, the rest of us will be here. Yeah.
Yeah, we should.
I say we.
Yeah.
Cover it out.
Yeah, we have total works review and a top 10 priorities, but those two things I know about.
Okay. Let's plan on January 8th.
As soon as we have a pot of coffee, I'm good.
Get it done, okay.
Dave.
All right. Old business? New business?
So that's, I do. We've talked in the past about senior housing and I know trustee Caporos had said that he has talked to, I mean, he works in construction and there's a lot of new things they're looking at, you know, depending on the age of the next groups that are retiring, there are a lot of different things they're looking at with construction. So I know he has offered to, you know, take people on a tour of some things, so I have taken advantage of that invitation and I'm going to meet on Wednesday morning at probably about 12:30 in Orland, if we kind of look around, so. That's a site that's under construction over there or?
Yeah, yeah, they're in early completion and that, but it's a, I mean, it's different. I had somebody actually on the street ask me, you know, why do we need senior housing? We got Beecher Manor already in town and I explained that differently.
It's not.
That's nursing care, that this is, you know, there's so many different options out there when you get into this senior living, assisted living, memory care, memory care optional, kitchens, non-kitchens, you know, dining room, you know, mandatory dining room optional, and I mean, and they're getting pretty fancy with these places, I mean, some of them got their own barber shops and beauty shops in them and movie theaters and all kinds of things, so.
Like a little city.
Yeah, they really, I mean, it's, you'll see that this one, this one's a little different, it's, I mean, you'll see it.
Yeah, and if anybody else is interested, I'm probably going to leave town around 11:30 on Wednesday.
I can't, I can't speak for him, he's back tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get a hold of him.
Which Wednesday is that?
Oh, this coming Wednesday. Yeah, I wanted to try to hammer it out before the holidays, there's a lot of busy stuff coming, so you can let me know if you're interested and run along. And that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else? Any other new business?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays?
Yeah.
Absolutely. You need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Roque?
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes. Yes.
Lieutenant, did you say the 20th was there on Christmas?